Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Ivernata.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Pearl Tonda.
Counselor Garcia.
And Counselor Ray Coopero.
Yes.
Nine members present, two absent. First item on the agenda is memorials and celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson and all members of the City Council. Whereas on August fourteenth through the sixteenth of 2018, the city of Chelsea held its first annual food truck festival. And whereas not only were the food trucks part of this event, but the presence of the Chelsea Police Department copsicle added to the enjoyment. And whereas the many residents, city employees, and other workers throughout the city desire food trucks and showed their support by attending the event, now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Chelsea, wish to go on record to thank the food truck team consisting of Cheryl Watson Fisher, Jenny Bules, Mike McAtier, Richie Zulo, Pamela Johnson, Nancy Slater, Catherine Cabral, Fidel Maltese, Frank Henry, and the police copsicle team Sergeant Officer O'Brien and Officer Mohica, the Williams School staff, and the DPW summer youth workers for putting together such a successful food truck festival.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
And actually, we'll send a copy over to the City Solicitor's Office. Thank you. Public speaking.
Public speaking. Anybody wish to speak? Walk up to the microphone, state your name and address. For the record, you have four minutes.
My name is Roman Puckel. I'm a member of the Polish-American residents post thirteen of Chelsea. I live in Peabody, Massachusetts. What I come to here is to ask the council to take a close look at Item seven A and seven B on the agenda. What you guys are asked to approve is a concept plan. I can submit a plan of Times Square, a nice picture, and say, well, that's a nice concept for Ballyham Square. But what are you really approving? The other thing is, there's a lot of other items that are to be contained: traffic signals, signs, metered parking, loading zones, bus stops. Are you doing any of that? Or you just say, hey, it's a good idea to see if a two-way traffic system works? And the people that prepared it, prepared a concept, just ideas, pictures. You have to understand exactly what you're approving, and I'll tell you right now, no one seems to know. The Parking and Traffic Commission approves something, I'd like to know specifically what they approved. I know the city manager is in favor of the two-way traffic, but can he put something in writing and document it to why he says two-way traffic is the best method? And there's a better solution to change some of the routing on some of the adjacent streets? That, I've got plenty of background. I worked on the big dig, and I know traffic flow, I know traffic signals, you know. Does anyone know what smart traffic signals are? Would I?
One more minute.
As a continuation until the next meeting, and I'd just like to close it with a true statement. And it goes like this. I once taught English at Harvard University. I remember the Polish parish, we had two newly ordained priests that come, they wanted to see Harvard University. I took them to Harvard University, sat them down on the grass, it was a nice sunny day, and I says, repeat after me, say yes, yes. Say no, no. I said, now, when you go back to Poland, tell everyone you were taught English at Harvard University. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michelangelo Coopero. I'm from 147 Essex Street. All right, I'm here on behalf of the Chelsea Popwana, I'm a board member. I was also born and raised in Chelsea. I was also part of the alumni, the 2001 national champions, Chelsea Popwana Red Devils, I'm not sure many people know that. So I bring this up because, to this day, since then, teams probably in Massachusetts have made it to Florida, but they never came home with a title. To this day, Chelsea is the only Massachusetts, as a matter of fact, the only New England team to win a national championship, take it home. And I feel like it's time to be recognized. I coached these young kids, I've been in this league since I came home, I embarked on a journey, 2011 to 12. After I did my tour in Afghanistan, I came home and I said, I'm gonna go back and get back to my community, which is these young kids, this is where I grew, when I was five years old. I started when I was five years old, I didn't go to Florida till I was 13. It's a lot of years. See, I bring this plaque, and I want to pass it around to the council, if you don't mind me. And it's a specific year, because in 2014, I put up a post on YouTube, me and a college professor that coached with me, and he was coaching at BU. He put up a video on YouTube asking for donations. That happened in 2014, we are 2018. All those years, all we got donated to us was $600. The same year, there was a post about a dog on the news. That dog got hit going across the highway. It's a young dog, you know, I just want to bring that up, because that dog, $50,000 in two days. It's not even a joke. Hospital bills, this is a random stranger finding a random dog. People lack compassion for the youth, you see? They'll be quicker to donate a quarter to an animal or pet in need, but they forget that there's youth like this. So I want these young kids to stand up real quick. You guys remember this, right? Breakdown! How you guys feeling? You can sit down now.
One more minute. One more minute.
So I'm gonna finish like this. These young kids are playing right now in Carter Park, which is a baseball field, there's no dedicated, there's nothing dedicated to this football city that brought a national championship to Massachusetts and the New England area, there's nothing, we have forgotten. There used to be something in the Chelsea Williams School. When I walked through that gym, they used to have a picture and a plaque with our trophies in it. There used to be something in the bank in the City Hall, the Chelsea Federal Credit Union, the plaque of our championships. You go there now, we're ghosts. So the young kids, they didn't even know about this probably till today. So the young kids that don't know about football in Chelsea, it's dying, the programs, there's nothing there. We get three days to practice a week, no lights. Seven thirty comes, the youngest age is five, the oldest is like 11, 12. Seven thirty comes, their practice ends at eight. Now, seven o'clock, it's gonna get darker. These kids are running around, safety issue if you ask me. Another thing, the last thing I want to say is, how can we put the best Chelsea product there if we're not getting help? That plaque that's being passed around, the return rate is eight. You see what we did with nothing, that's in 2015, there's still, eight of them kids still playing on the same team. Think of that. Imagine what we did with nothing. If you give us a little, imagine how big we could bring a football community back to Chelsea. The only team in Massachusetts, I can't stress it enough. There's no lights, these kids are playing in the dark. We got a program of 50 kids, young men, young women, and they're running around in the dark. I mean, I can't stress that enough. You see this? They're playing in things darker than this. How are you gonna catch a ball in the dark? I mean, all I'm asking is for Chelsea to recognize that the 2001 national champions are still alive with no help. Give us a little help, give us a little light. In the dark, you can't see, but give us a little crack of light, we'll grow. You can see through that light, you understand? All we need is a little bit of light, there's still hope here, because the nucleus is still alive. I got a coach with me right here, I got a president with me right here, I got a lot of people in that picture that, that's probably your relatives, or your friends' relatives, your family's relatives, and these are little kids. So I'm not asking for me, this ain't about me. This is selfless service, I don't get paid to do this. I go there, I lose everything, a lot of money, I'm struggling, it's fine, but I'll struggle to see these kids shine, because you know what? The youth is the future, and that's how I'm gonna leave it. Thank you, guys.
My name is Charlene McLean. I reside at 100 Broadway. I am a seventeen-year resident of Chelsea, a member of the Chelsea Cultural Council, and a member volunteer at Chelsea Green Roots. And I'm here tonight to offer my comments on the traffic plans recommended by the Parking and Traffic Commission to you, the City Council. From the very first of the reimagining Broadway community meetings, it was very clear that the city manager and the Department of Planning and Development wanted to convert to two-way Broadway. And in spite of opposition from members of the community and some members of the City Council, they've been pretty manipulative in moving forward this two-way plan. None of the community meetings allowed for meaningful input. It wasn't until the July meeting of the Parking and Traffic Commission that community members were allowed to actually speak directly to the plans and weren't confined to offering opinions by sticking dots next to pre-selected scenarios or by responding to inane Facebook polls. Arguments that have been presented in favor of two-way Broadway have centered on improving the traffic flow, that it would lead to traffic calming, thereby making the roadway safer, and that it will allow the police to crack down on double parking. To this, I would say that we can improve traffic flow by installing traffic lights or signs at strategic points on Broadway between City Hall and Williams Street. This would also help to calm traffic, as would the prominent posting of speed limit signs along this corridor. As for double parking, changing from one-way to two-way traffic won't, in and of itself, prevent people from double parking. I just would ask you to look at Meridian Street in East Boston, from the McCartell Bridge to Maverick Square, which has been two-way since I moved to this area, and which regularly sees cars double parking. Moreover, if Chelsea police aren't currently willing to do anything about double parking, why should we believe that they will do something if we convert to two-way? As someone who relies very heavily on public transportation, which in Chelsea means MBTA buses, I am very concerned that the two-way proposal will negatively impact the bus's ability to navigate Broadway and pick up and drop off passengers. This will, in turn, severely compromise traffic flow on the Broadway corridor, as well as the roads that feed into and out of Broadway. If you couple this with unpredictable bridge openings, increased volumes of traffic resulting from large-scale residential and hotel projects, special needs shuttle vans that line up on Broadway to safely drop off their passengers.
One more minute.
Rush hour traffic through downtown Chelsea will be paralyzed. I would like to say that I am very much in favor of improving the fabric of the Broadway Business Corridor, as well as improving the traffic flow along Broadway, thereby making it an attractive space and one that is safer for drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians. I do not, however, think this will be accomplished by changing Broadway from one-way to two-way traffic. Further, the one-way traffic plan as recommended to the City Council is a shameful and false option, since it would reduce the current driving lanes to only one. Its only purpose, therefore, is to manipulate you city councilors into choosing the two-way plan. I strongly urge you council to reject both plans that have been recommended, and to request the Parking and Traffic Commission to revise the plans so they aren't merely reflective of the latest trends in urban planning, but take into account the realities of how Chelsea residents use Broadway and its surrounding streets, as well as taking into consideration real and meaningful input from the community.
Ten seconds.
So the Broadway Business Corridor can be improved for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Bonapani. I'm from Melrose, and I represent 400 of the 1,200 gas workers that have been locked out of their jobs since June 25th by National Grid. We're into the 12th week of the lockout. We have some of the members here tonight that service the city of Chelsea when they're working, some of them live in Chelsea. I myself have been a gas worker, a field worker for over 30 years. I'm not a full-time union official. And we're some of the people that maintain the system throughout the cities and towns of Massachusetts. We respond and fix gas leaks, we install new lines, we have inspectors that inspect contractors' work, we do all types of gas work. And again, we want to be back out there doing the work, and we're locked out, and unfortunately we can't do that. I'm here to speak about 10A, and this is about public safety, it's about the safety for the citizens of Chelsea. It's about a resolution for a moratorium for any new or replacement gas work in the city while the experienced workers are locked out. I know this is the second reading, and even since the first reading, we've had numerous complaints about unsafe activity by inexperienced replacement workers with the Department of Public Utilities, and they're investigating those complaints. We have over ten complaints with OSHA about unsafe work performed by replacement workers, and we have one complaint at the Federal Pipeline Hazardous Material Administration. We don't think that inexperienced people should be performing any unnecessary work in this city. Emergencies, we understand, but even those type jobs, that type work, should be done with increased oversight over who's doing it. And I mean, if you need someone from the fire department to sit there and watch what they're doing, to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, it's probably a good idea. We have video, photographs, and statements to support anything I just said. If you want to see it, I'd be more than happy to send it to you.
One more minute.
And if you have any questions tonight, I'd be more than happy to answer them. So again, this is about safety, it's about the safety of the citizens of Chelsea. We have various serious jobs, and some of the people here tonight, we take what we do very, very seriously, and we know we have a lot of responsibility, we love what we do, and we really want to be back doing it. Thank you.
Buenas noches. My name is Maria Belen Power, and I'm the Associate Executive Director of Green Roots, and I'm here to also speak on 10A in support of a resolution that would monitor all permits for National Grid. We've stood with union workers on numerous occasions, but in this particular fight, we've been supporting National Grid gas workers from the very beginning. We think that any permit that is being given to National Grid is really a way of them getting around, negotiating a good union contract that provides good benefits, good salaries, and really good quality of life. We, again, also, like the gentleman before me said, allowing them to work is also a threat to our public safety with gas leaks being fixed, with workers that may not be trained and are not unionized. Other cities have approved similar monitoring and moratoriums like Winchester, Waltham, and Haverhill, and we do think that Chelsea should be leading the effort to protect good union jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Lou Mammalit. I'm the, one of the two Assistant Directors of Public Works on the operations side. I also serve as the city's engineer. I'm actually here after reviewing the City Council agenda on Item 11F under new business. This is in regards to looking for contractors doing construction work in the city, essentially to remove materials and equipment at the end of every day or when not in use. While I wholeheartedly support the idea of making sure that the work zones are clean and safe, and that we're maximizing the opportunity for residents to park, especially in the off-work hours, I think that my concern right now, based upon the way this is worded, is that an interpretation of this could essentially require contractors that are doing capital improvement work, which are longer-duration construction projects, similar to what was done on Sheratliff Street, similar to what's currently being done on Maverick Street, and work that we, DPW, is essentially planning for pretty much every street out into the future as part of an organized capital plan to renew infrastructure throughout the city. The interpretation of this could be similar to what was interpreted once a while back in Boston, where the goal was to have materials and equipment brought in and taken out every day. And what that essentially did there, and what it essentially does, is it turns an eight-hour workday into a four-hour workday, because it's two hours to mobilize and two hours to demobilize every single day. That essentially doubles the labor, because you're basically doubling the duration of the job. It also doubles the amount of time that we're in the neighborhoods, it doubles the amount of police details that are incurred, and it also doubles the amount of time that streets are either unpaved or sidewalks are opened. Again, I fully support the concept behind this, but I think the way this is written has a potential to be interpreted and attempted to be implemented in a way that's gonna be, it essentially will double the cost of all capital improvement projects that are out on the street. So I guess what I would say is, on behalf of DPW, myself, Fidel Maltese, my other Assistant Director, and Bert Taverner, our DPW Director, I think somewhere between what this says and perhaps what folks see today on the streets, there is some movement and some room available to move in a direction to allow us to get contractors to do a better job, to keep sites cleaner, tighter, have less material stored. And that's something that we can implement directly into contracts in advance of the jobs being bid, so it's clear, it's well-understood, we can have pre-bid meetings to lay that out in great detail.
Ten seconds.
Again, I'm not gonna stay for the vote, I'm only here as a city employee long enough to comment on this. I only feel as though it needs careful consideration, given the fact that it could essentially double the cost of all capital improvement projects. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
My name's Barbara Richard. I live at 7 Hooper Street in Chelsea, and I'm here to speak about a couple of things. First off, Joe, it's nice to see that you're okay, you know, because over the summer, you kind of disappeared. You were amongst the missing, we had many meetings in our district, and you weren't around. Gee, why are you our councilman when you're not here to speak for us? And at that note, I'm leaving it, because if I keep it on, then... On second, my other issue is making Broadway a two-way. I think it hasn't been reached out to the community well enough, and I spoke with Roy out in the hallway, and he seems to think it has. He said that this has been ongoing for two years. First time I heard about it was about maybe six months ago. I didn't even know, and I live at the other end of the city, I didn't know that there was meetings at Williams School. And I'm very active in this place. Everybody knows my face. They see me and they turn around and walk away. So, I'm a bitch, and I'm sorry, but, you know? I'm just saying, everybody knows me, and I speak it like it is. I'm very truthful. I think making Broadway is spot-on dead wrong. Not only are you gonna ruin the business that are there during the construction, business is gonna go down, safety issues, and you're talking about people leaving their equipment around as it is? What's gonna happen? I mean, and there's buses, but two buses going by, when you're gonna have bike path, a parking spot, and then two buses trying to get down that narrow street? I don't think it's right. I don't think, you know, you just wanna fix it, fix it, but don't make it a two-way, leave it a one-way. There hadn't been a reason why it got changed in the first place. And one more issue.
One more minute.
The Traffic Commission was supposed to have a traffic study at the corner of Broadway, Eastern Ave, in Clinton Street? Never happened. Now we're into the school season, still hasn't happened. We're supposed to be, you know, Tommy Ambesino had said something about putting smart bikes there. How could you put anything there when you haven't even done the traffic study?
Ten more seconds, Barbara.
That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Bell, forty-five years in Chelsea, 1973, right before the Chelsea Fire, I moved here. Poplar Street, now I live up on Madison Ave, so I've been a lifer, coach, player, league leader. And I'm here on a matter of, on 10A, to speak. I had emailed a bunch of you guys, I think the whole group, I got a response for about half of you. I know some, that's because I know some of you personally. I contacted, I would expect to hear from everybody. That is the dynamic of representation, so I'm glad that you see people mobilized here. But on 10A, I'm gonna get right to the point, I don't want to be PD repeat on what the President said. It's a matter of public safety, it's what it comes down to. So if you're a little bit worried that you're gonna get used as a political pawn in a labor issue, I'm a labor guy. This is not a labor issue, this is public safety. These workers that are trained and skilled need to be in the ground fixing the pipes that are under our ground, okay? Because, like claymore mines, you don't know when they're gonna go off, you don't know if it's properly fixed. So I don't see why this shouldn't even got to this point. I thought it was a, some towns have already passed this. This is a no-brainer, it's public safety. Chelsea people first. I don't think it's a hard vote, I would expect it to be unanimous. The work being done in these holes is not the same as the trained, skilled employees. We know why they're locked out, it, that's a labor issue, it's money, but it comes down to, we have to have the right people doing the right jobs underneath the ground that's underneath Chelsea residents. We don't know when something's gonna go wrong, because they're gonna bury the mistake. Maybe it won't go off, it might be next month, it might be two years from now. So I would say to the Chelsea, and I understand emergent conditions will arise, I would hope in those situations that we have strict enforcement of oversight. But right now, I know from what I've seen, and I've been presented with documentation, we don't have proper people down there fixing the pipes that are under our streets. So I would hope that you vote unanimously on 10A, and we stop all work, new work being done on the public safety issue. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President. Counsel Paul Murphy, 8 Fremont Ave, former District One City Councilor. I am here because I took an oath when I was a City Councilor to protect the city, the residents, and watch out for their best interests. And I am here in support of 10A myself, knowing that the work that's being done in our streets could have a natural disaster, that the city's on notice, and I would not want to see that happen, I would not want to be in the news for something like this to happen. It is a labor dispute, but it's a different labor dispute. These individuals are locked out. For years, when they haven't had a contract, in good faith, they would work under the current contract that has expired. They are locked out. They want to work, they want to be in these streets, they want to make it safe. And I expect, or I hope, that my fellow colleagues understand how severe this could really be, especially when we do have little children like this. Something was to happen in a park or close to a park, and they can't even see... Something was to happen in a park or close to a park, and they can't even see it because I guess they don't have lights. So I really, I really, really hope that we can support this, we can support our local workers, get these people back on the streets, have these lines that are being dug up into these new properties inspected properly so we don't have any natural disaster in the city. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate seeing all you guys.[621.16][621.16](APPLAUSE).
My name is Jose Agustín Gareta Saldana. I live in 73 Essex Street. And the reason why I'm here is twofold. I need your help. A group of individuals that are looking to improve the safety in our community are putting out a mini-grant program for middle and high-school-aged youth. There's $6,000 that are going to be dispersed, and there's an informational session next Monday, September 17th, at 6:00 PM. And what I need your help with is to let your folks, your constituents, know that there are, there's a group of people that are willing to invest in our youth. You just have to have an idea that is going to engage at least five youth, or five new youth to an existing program. So if any programs, and I see some of you are interested in applying, grants are going to range from $250 to up to $2,000, depending on the application. So please come out to the informational session, September 17th, at 6:00 PM, Monday, September 17th, at 6:00 PM. And you guys can come out and represent your constituents as well. And the second thing that I would like to encourage you guys to help me with, it's a leadership training for parents in particular, or guardians. It's called the Parent Leadership Training Institute, and it's going to start in October. And what we're hoping to do is to provide tools to parents or caregivers to really become civically active and become better advocates for themselves, but also for their children. So it's called the Parent Leadership Training Institute. I'll send the information to all the city councilors. And if you know any parents that you feel have great potential, but they just don't know what steps to take, please send them our way, and we'll be happy to provide them the tools. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.[747.38][747.38](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name is Lisa Santigate, and I live across the street at 221 Sheratliff Street. And I wanted to comment on the imminent vote for reimagining Broadway. I'm not sure if it will be tonight or in two weeks on the 24th. But I would like to ask you to consider, particularly with the two-way plan, the environmental impact that such a plan will have, particularly for the properties across the street. If Broadway is two-way, there will be more than double the amount of traffic in front of our home and in front of the North Bellingham Veterans Home, which does include a vulnerable population. So as far as noise goes and air pollution, if there is a traffic light there, there will be an increase in idling vehicles. Right now, it is very difficult to keep the sound under control and the air pollution under control. So with at least twice as many cars going by, it just feels very frightening, particularly considering the high asthma rates in Chelsea. I know that seven trees were removed this summer, and since that time across the street, the noise has increased, as has the air pollution. Two of the trees were more than 40 years old. And although there were very important reasons, particularly from the ADA Disability Act as far as access, that still did not, our hearts were broken that the trees were removed. And so that, those trees really would help with sound and air pollution as well. So if you are going to go to a two-way, we really need to think about what kind of environmental mitigation you can provide for the properties that would be directly impacted. Thank you.
Thank you.[885.25][885.25](APPLAUSE).
Madam President, thank you. Tom Ambrosino, City Manager. So I do want to talk very briefly about the Traffic Commission proposal. So I really just want to remind the council not to lose sight of the fact that the vast majority of these changes are really positive ones that are going to benefit the entire community and have nothing to do with whether that stretch of Broadway from Fifth to Williams is one-way or two-way. We're proposing major improvements in street, sidewalk, pedestrian access, traffic signaling in areas that's really going to make this area from here to Williams Street much, much safer, regardless of whether it's one-way or two-way. That's been dominating the conversation, but I just want to remind you, these are major changes that are happening, independent of that, that are really something that we ought to be celebrating. And I thank the council for its willingness to put money towards this effort. Most of what's before you is non-controversial. The Fay Square changes, the Chelsea Square changes, the Bellingham Square changes. For the most part, there's been virtually no opposition to those changes. The area around City Hall, other than tonight hearing that, the really, the biggest concern was the relocation of the bus consolidation, and we have agreed not to do that. So what I'm saying is, about four-fifths of what is before you is really non-controversial and completely beneficial to everyone. Yes, there's controversy over whether the stretch between Fifth and Williams on Broadway ought to remain one-way or go to two-way. What I'm telling you is, the work that we do, the geometry, the construction work, is exactly the same, whether it's one-way or two-way. The only difference is signage and line painting. And so that's something that can easily be changed, and what I have been advocating for is to try it for a small pilot period. That could be as little as three months. If it doesn't work, in a matter of days, you could reroute the traffic, paint the lines again, and you would have your one-way configuration. Because the geometry of what we're building in this entire reimagining Broadway doesn't change one iota. So I'd ask you to consider that, and if you don't, and it's your call, I would just say the other parts of this plan are really beneficial and for the most part, non-controversial. So I would hope that at least those ports, Fay, Chelsea Square, the Bellingham Square, the area around City Hall could be approved, because this is really very beneficial to everyone. Thank you.[1064.83][1064.83](APPLAUSE).
My name is Gerald August. I lived here for 15 years. I played sports my whole life out of Chelsea. Single parent. My mother taught me, it was just my mother, and all I had was sports, keep me out of the streets. You know, to come here, and I moved out of Chelsea about 15 years ago, to move to Methuen, Massachusetts, and my heart is still Chelsea. When I come back out here and I see these kids don't have no lights in their stadium, it hurts me. I'm part of the GBL champs of 2000. The next year, I had to leave, again, to Methuen, Massachusetts, and my brothers won the national championship. To see my brothers on ESPN to win national championship is a big thing. And I cried that day, I cried in my room, and I said, "I could have been there, but my mom had to move for some, for some reason," because there was no parking at the time. She was fighting for parking. But now I'm back. I'm back. And these kids right here, they're champions. We breed nothing but champions. Chelsea breed nothing but champions. And all my trophies, I still got my trophies from Boys and Girls Club, from Papawana, from baseball. Champions, I just got champions, first place, that's all I had. That's all I needed for these kids to have some light. Hopefully you guys could open up Highland Park for these kids. Hopefully you guys could open up Vogue Park for these kids. Hopefully you guys could open up some type of park, even so, just home. These kids are not going to, these kids are not going to tear up the field like that. They're kids. We just need some, we just need some more, a little bit more time. That's all we need. I remember you, I remember you. You guys used to, wanted to recruit me to go to Northeast when I was playing basketball. I remember you guys. I'm back, and I want to put this championship back in the city, because we are the only, we are the only team in Massachusetts, in New England, just like my brother said, to ever bring the championship back to the city, to Massachusetts. So please consider it for these kids, because I'm driving 30 minutes, 40 minutes to come to teach for these kids, okay? Please, peace, love, and success. That's all I got to give.
Thank you.[1230.47][1230.47](APPLAUSE).
I would like to encourage the city council to vote no on this business of reimagining Broadway, what is being described as the difference between a two-way and a one-way, but in fact includes a lot more than that. Many different aspects of this. Fay Square, Chelsea Square, the business of traffic lights on almost every, at almost every intersection, the business of squeezing bike lanes into the very narrow Broadway, the business of buses, which we are already in crisis in Chelsea big time with the MBTA, and there's been no consideration that I could see in the whole year that we've spent discussing this thing and designing this thing on how does that coordinate with the bus routes. Now, I'm not trying to cast dispersions on anybody, but we have repeatedly asked for some sort of studies of comparable situations and what the results have been, and we get nothing. We get patted on the head and told, "It will be all right, trust us." Well, I'm not in a trusting mood, and I'm not alone in that, because what we have right now due to poor communication, again, non-intentional, but just not getting us, is that we have a lot of people in Chelsea who are mistrusting, mistrusting the city, the city government. And that is coming to the fore in this situation. So if you go ahead and rubber-stamp this and go with the two-way versus the one-way, the one-way, by the way, being ridiculous, which pushes us toward the two-way, and I have to think that's not accidental either. The whole thing is dangerous. We don't, we don't know what to expect, we don't know what to do. We're going to have cars coming at us with
One more minute.
Head-on situations. And so I'm asking you to, you know, do the bold thing. Do the thing that gets down onto the level that things rest on anyway, regardless of whether we want to acknowledge it or not. How people feel about the situation is paramount, because you need the full cooperation of more than 40,000 people in the city of Chelsea to make this thing work. And what you have now is confusion, mistrust, and anger. Please, turn this thing down, and let's start over again. Take our time and do it. What's the rush? What's the rush? Thank you.[1461.83][1461.83](APPLAUSE).
Anybody else for public speaking? Going once, going twice, seeing no further speakers, that portion of the meeting is closed. Moving on.
Approval of the minutes, June 25th, 2018, special minutes, August 20th, 2018.
Counselor Brown?
17 minutes is filed.
Under suspension. Yes, Counselor Abayaneda?
If I may, I'd like to make a motion to take out of order Section 7B. And if I may speak on that? The communication from the Traffic Board regarding the August 21, 2018 meeting. I've simply asked that we send that to Subcommittee on Conference.
Want to send it to the Subcommittee on Conference?
Send to, yeah, Subcommittee on Conference. We have, we have until the 24th, the act, between now and then, the city council can have a meeting to discuss it.
Yeah, we actually have until October 6th. That's when the communication came to us, to vote on it.
Okay, but, so I'm just asking to send to Subcommittee at this moment, so that we can schedule a Subcommittee meeting and have a discussion on it.
Okay.
Under suspension, or?
Under suspension.
Under suspension, if you will.
Send in the Subcommittee on Conference.
The Traffic Parking Commission, the reimagining Broadway, the entire communication.
So you can announce to everyone that we will have at one point a meeting on this again.
Okay. So we are going to move the matter from the Traffic Parking Commission that addresses the reimagining Broadway to a Subcommittee on Conference. A date will be mentioned, so folks can be present, and
You can meet the deadline.
And we'll be able to meet the deadline. We have until October 6th to vote on it, before it becomes law.
The entire thing, Counselor?
Or do you want us to take out?
Because I have some questions on other items besides Item 4.
You want to send the whole thing?
Eliminating two unmee-
The, the request was
The whole communication.
The whole communication will go to Subcommittee on Conference?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
We'll go back to regular business.
All right, back to regular business. The special meeting minutes.
Communications from the City Manager. We have a copy of a communication?
Counselor Abayaneda?
Request to take out of orders, 7, I'm sorry, 10A.
10A, resolution.
National Grid.
Oh, from second reading?
Correct.
Yep.
Just for, for procedure, you forgot the approval of the minute for the special meeting on the 20th. We jumped over that.
I, I called both of them out.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Counselor Abayaneda, would you like to speak on it?
Thank you. This is the resolution that was introduced at the August special meeting pertaining to support of United Steelworkers Local Union, as discussed tonight, and as some members of that labor unit came up tonight to talk about. Originally, President Damali Vido had introduced a resolution asking for support. I move tonight, I have an amendment that I'd like to propose, so that the amendment is not, so that the resolution itself does not conflict with the city charter, and I'd read it out first, so that you can, it could be put onto record. The amendment would be added to the paragraph, "Be it therefore resolved that the city of Chelsea remain vigilant in monitoring all national grid work being done during the lockout, national grid workers, and that no new permits for construction projects shall be issued by the city of Chelsea." My amendment would add on, unless, so unless it is determined by the city manager or is designee that the permit is emergency in nature.
I think that was going to submit it.
So I will now submit that forward.
Pastor, will you take a two-minute recess, and so we can all get a copy of this amendment? I don't have that amendment.
Madam, before you do that?
Okay, hang on one second. Counselor Bishop?
I have a recess. I have presented a resolution, I mean, an amendment also.
Okay.
After speaking with the city solicitor.
Okay.
In determining that it is in violation of the city charter
Okay.
To order a department to do anything. We don't have the authority to interfere in the day-to-day operations of any department in the city. So I have submitted a amendment that I would like the clerk to read, so they can get, you can get copies of it.
The amendment introduced by Counselor Bishop to remove and that no new permits for gas constructing projects shall be issued by the city of Chelsea, that would be remit. for gas constructing projects shall be issued by the city of Chelsea, that would be removed and inserted in its place, and that the city manager personally monitor all permits and ensure that the best interests of all Chelsea residents are being met.
All right, so well, we'll do it.
May I just say one thing about the difference between the two amendments?
Yeah, sure.
My amendment asks that that particular part that's ordering a department or the city manager to do something be taken out, because I am told, and the city solicitor is here, if anybody wants to ask her, I've already met with her and discussed it, that we can't do that, that it's illegal for us to do. So to leave that section in there, which Counselor Avenue Dale's amendment does, would make it illegal.
All right, so we'll take a couple of minutes session, recess, so that all the counselors can have both amendments and make a informed decision, so we'll run break. All right, folks. Back in order, are you sure?
Counselors, please report back to their seats.
Counselors, please report back to your seats. Okay. We will have a quorum in a minute. Good, Counselor Avellaneda?
Thank you. Madam President, at this moment, I'm going to withdraw my amendment after conferring with the city solicitor and Counselor Bishop find that his is the correct version, and I'll be supporting his amendment.
All right, thank you. So can we read it aloud for?
The amendment?
The amendment, correct.
The amendment reads, "Be it therefore resolved that the city of Chelsea remain vigilant in monitoring all national grid work being done during the lockout of national grids workers, and that no new permits for gas construction projects shall be issued by the city of Chelsea, and that the city manager personally monitor all permits and ensure that the best interest of all Chelsea residents are being met." That's the amendment.
Now it's properly before us, what do we do with it?
Well, it was referred to conference. Did you refer it to conference?
No, he hasn't, nobody has done anything with it.
Okay, the amendment is properly before you, any discussion on the amendment?
Would you like to speak on it?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. I sent this to a second reading for the reasons that are obvious. I didn't feel as though we should do anything with this resolution until we could speak with our city solicitor. I am not opposed to the union, I am not opposed to saying, you know, we wish them well, and we do. My only opposition is that it has to be worded properly, and that wording can't say that we're ordering a department to do something, because our charter, which is our Bible, prohibits us from ordering any department or interfering with the daily operation or day-to-day operation of any department. So I think the way that my amendment reads will hopefully make everybody happy, and I move for a call on the amendment.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Avellaneda, did you want to speak on it, on the resolution? Any, any counselors wish to speak on it? Okay, so, we'll take a roll call vote.
A yes vote would be to approve the amendment and adopt a resolution as amended. Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Absent.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Pearl Atanda?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia, absent. Counselor Ray Cooper, absent. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor and none opposed, three absent. The resolution is adopted as amended.
Congratulations.
We'll go back on to regular, out of our business, communications from the city manager. First communication from the city manager requests for conflict of interest law exemption. Dear Counselors, the Division of Recreation and Cultural Affairs recently hired a Chelsea school teacher, Ms. Kelly Sawyer, to a part-time position assisting in the Chelsea Community Schools Puppet Theater program, because Ms. Sawyer is an existing municipal employee with a financial interest in this separate matter, she needs an exemption vote by the city council from the statutory conflict of interest laws. I respectfully request that the city council approve this exemption. All work performed by Ms. Sawyer for the Division of Recreation and Cultural Affairs will be outside of her normal hours as a teacher. She meets all the statutory requirements for the grant of an exemption. Thank you for your attention to this matter, City Manager Thomas Ambrosino.
Thank you, Mr. Cl-.
New business?
Sep, then file a communication under suspension. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
The next communication from the city manager, rate increases. I am writing to inform you of water, sewer, and trash rate increases that were approved this week following a public hearing. The rates are affected as of July first, twenty-eighteen, and new fee schedules are attached. Water rate, the new water rates are five dollars and forty-two cents per hundred cubic feet for tier one. These water rates represent a six percent increase over current rates. Sewer rate, the new sewer rates are nine dollars and thirty-eight per hundred cubic feet for tier one, and these new sewer rates represent an increase of nine percent. Combined rate, for residential customers who use under one thousand cubic feet per month and pay tier one rates, the new combined water and sewer rate is fourteen eighty, an increase of seven point nine five percent. With this increase, the average water and sewer bill in Chelsea for FY nineteen, assuming annual uses of one hundred twenty HCF, will be one thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars. As has been through the past few years, we have set these rates to generate sufficient money to cover the cost of operating our water and sewer systems and avoid annual deficits in those accounts. Trash rate, the new trash rate will, is thirty dollars and nine cents monthly for residential property and one hundred and forty-one ninety-six monthly for commercial units and mixed buildings. Owner-occupied units remain exempt from this fee. The new charge represents an increase of ten percent. Residential owners will pay an additional thirty-two eighty-eight annually as a result of this increase. I recognize that annual increase of ten percent are painful, but even with this increase, we will not cover the cost of our trash system with our fees. I have mentioned for some time that the city should consider changes to our current rate structure for solid waste disposal. Specifically, I suggest we start the discussion of at least some nominal fee for owner-occupied units. Otherwise, ten-plus increases will be the norm for the foreseeable future, but I leave the final decision on that to the city council and will answer any questions on these new rates. Sincerely, Tom Ambrosino, City Manager.
Let's do all of the counsel. Counselor recognized, Bob Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move this communication to the committee on conference, and I would like to explain why I would like to have a conference on it.
Okay, you got the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. The water and sewer rates in the city of Chelsea, as we all know, are too high, and I don't think any city council here or person in the audience will disagree with me. They're too high. We seem to have, not this council, but it seems those that set the rates seem to have the mindset that they have to go up every year, because if they don't, then people are going to get used, are going to be upset when they do go up. Does that make any sense to anybody? Makes no sense to me at all. I think we should be doing everything that we can to hold the line or maybe reduce what we're charging for water and sewer. If we look around us, other cities and towns are not charging the exorbitant rates that we are, and that's what, the first thing that they generally say when you want to compare, oh, look what Everett's doing, look what Revere's doing, look what Malden's doing, well, do look, please, because they're not paying anywhere near as much as we're paying. No efforts are being made to save money. It seems to be a feeding trough at the Water and Sewer Commission. I'm not happy about it. So I would like to have a conference so that we can maybe get on the right footing here for our next round, and maybe hold the line instead of going up six percent. I don't feel bad, in a way, I feel bad for anybody that has to, has to pay more money, but if you're, if you are living here and you own your property, I feel worse for those people than I do those that are charging, in many cases, exorbitant rents. But they are, this six percent is not going to affect them at all, they're going to pass it right on to the rent payer. So, you know, they're not going to feel it, they're not, same thing with the taxes. You want to go up in the taxes, go ahead, they don't care, they're just going to increase your rent. So the homeowners, the people that are struggling, a lot of our homeowners are on fixed income, many of them are retired, and they don't, just can't come up with an extra three hundred dollars every two months. So we need to do something, and I would like to have a conference and start now for next year, taking a deeper look at what, what we're doing here with the water and sewer rates. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Counselor, is it a particular committee you want this to go to? You want it to go to committee on conference? Okay, thank you. Next order, please, Mr. Clark.
The next order, introduced by city manager, communication from the city manager, water and sewer discounts for owner-occupants residing for three-plus years. Dear Counsel, I'm writing in response to the recent city council order requesting that I analyze the feasibility of extending the ten percent water and sewer senior citizen discount to all owner-occupants who have lived in their residence for three years or more. As you may recall, I did a very similar analysis last year when the council wanted to know the cost of extending that, this discount to all non-senior owner-occupants. That analysis is set forth in my October twenty-four, twenty-seventeen letter, a copy of which is attached. The analysis is very similar, the difference is that instead of an additional two thousand two hundred twenty-five households, which was at the time the approximate number of all non-senior owner-occupants, this proposed program would add approximately one thousand one hundred and seventy-five households to the discount. This is based upon the analysis by Mary Lou Island, our director of assessing. Of all owner-occupants who have owned their home for three years or more, do not already qualify for the senior discount and do not live in condominiums. Most condominiums can't qualify for this discount because they do not have separate meters. Again, the math is relatively simple. The average annual water and sewer bill for a Chelsea household, based upon the new rates approximately approved for July first, twenty-eighteen, is one thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars. A ten percent discount on this rate is one hundred and seventy-seven sixty. Multiply that by one thousand one hundred and seventy-five, and the total cost of this extension of the discount may be as high as two hundred and eight thousand six hundred eighty dollars. As noted in my October twenty-seventeen letter, the discount doesn't cost the city any money. Rather, the cost is spread among all ratepayers, driving up the rate slightly higher than would exist without the discount. Because this proposal further raises rates, I wouldn't independently recommend its adoption. However, if this is something the council wishes to do, I will implement the following, a council directive to this effect once it returns to session on September first. I simply ask that we not implement until next July, otherwise it will have to do a mid-year rate increase, which will likely not be well received coming on the heels of the almost eight percent increase in July.
Let's do it, Counsel. Counsel recognized, Chairman, Mr. Bishop? I'm sorry, Cooper, Counselor Cooper. Director what?
I'd like to file a communication on this new business. I'd like to speak on it, too.
What do you mean? I'm not sure, you can't file it under new business?
I want to accept a file of communication.
Accept a file of communication, and then be-
Under, under-
Okay, accept and file of communication.
Under suspension, yeah.
You got the floor, Mr. Counselor Cooper. Counselor, you got the floor.
As from what you can see here, the city manager's telling us about the increase of the water. On this, there'll be another part here where it says that all, I put in another paper that you're going to see eventually come, right, where the homeowners that have been unoccupied for three years will get a rate discount, ten percent, on the water and sewer. It seems like I always hear the stuff in a city saying, oh, the stakeholders, they, the stakeholders and stakeholders. The stakeholders are eating steak, ribeye steaks, and the poor people of the city are eating cube steaks. The poor people of the city should be able to live and afford to live in this city, which they've been driven out. Regardless of what it is, the city itself, there's something like six thousand and chase, almost seven thousand homes. Out of the seven thousand homes that you have here, one thousand seven hundred and something is owner-occupied, which includes condos. Two thousand is subsidized housing, which the city owns, and the rest is affordable, it's rental. The rental don't care, they're still going to go up, regardless of what it is. The ones that are subsidized, doesn't matter, because they don't pay. The ones that is going, the most important of it all, is the poor homeowner, which all the time is the one that gets to cover all the burden. So the poor homeowner, plus we have thirty million dollars in surplus, I never hear anybody say, why don't we give some of that back to the poor people that live here, the poor homeowners which are here, which are the biggest stakeholders of this city? They are here every day, they pay for everything, so why shouldn't the biggest stakeholders of our city get a decrease, get ten percent off, which is minimal? The whole amount comes out to two hundred thousand dollars. We give two hundred thousand dollars to this one, three hundred to that one, what about the poor people? Why can't they get something in return? Why does it always have to be, well, if we do this, we're going to have to take it out of here? Who cares where you take it? Give it back to them. It doesn't matter where you take it, you're going to take it from them regardless of what it is. So why can't we, the people, and the ones that are actually supposed to represent the people, give something back to the people that you're supposed to represent? Why not? Is that so bad, the city ain't going to go broke after they figure it out, all the amount, if you do everything, the amount of people that are there, it's only going to cost the city two hundred thousand dollars. What is that? We gave the senior a discount, ten percent. You know what it amounted to? Thirty thousand dollars, and they all had a big argument to give the seniors thirty thousand dollars. Where is that? You keep giving, everybody wants money, the school wants money, this one wants money, that one wants money. How about the people? Don't they deserve something in return? I think it's about time that this body should turn around and give the people something back. That's what they got elected for, to give something back to the people who put them there.
Thank you, Counselor, you have something coming up under new business also. Anyone else want to speak? Thank you.
Next communication from the city manager, request approval for increase in school department FY nineteen.
Send the communication to committee on finance.
Okay, Counselor? Mr. Chairman of Finance, have that go to the conference on finance. Next communication, appointments to boards and commissions. Dear Counselor, pursuant to section four-two of the charter of the city of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city for appointment to the city street warden, Assistant DPW, Director Fidel Maltese, thirteen admirals wait Chelsea for a three-year term.
Over to a second reading, under suspension.
All the appointments?
All the appointments. There are no objections?
No objection. Final communication from the city manager, request for funds from the general stabilization account. Dear Counselors, I am writing with my first request in FY nineteen for supplemental funds. In this case, I am seeking to accomplish two goals, to cover the cost of demolition of the burnt-out residential home at eighty Warren Avenue, and to replace the air conditioning unit for the city council chambers. Demolition of eighty Warren Ave-
Wait, the rest of the reading, Mr. Chair, please. Counselor recognized, Counselor Bishop, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move this to the committee on finance, and if I may speak on it.
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Today is the tenth of September, it is not kicked Tom Ambrosino night, and I just want to say, I don't mean this in a personal way. I was a little upset when I saw this communication. We put a lot of money in the last fiscal year in the stabilization fund, and as you all know, that stabilization fund was created to pay for emergencies, and that was the whole idea, we're putting that money away. It was called free cash before we put it in the stabilization-
It was called free cash before we put it in the stabilization fund. I think the city manager still thinks it's free cash. Why would you ask to move money for these two items out of the stabilization fund? I would like to, and I will ask, at the Finance Committee meeting. The number, number two request of $50,000 to put air conditioning in this room may be a great idea, but shouldn't that have been part of the capital improvement fund? And if they forgot to put it in the capital improvement budget, wouldn't you take unused capital improvement money that's sitting there, that hasn't been used for various projects, transfer that into this account instead of going directly right away to the stabilization fund? And I said to myself, why would you do that? Well, I know why. Because we all want these things. And I think the city manager is saying, let's get going on that stabilization fund. Because he's going to be coming in next week, next meeting, and the meeting after, looking for more money out of that stabilization fund. I know that, number one, we all want a parking study, and they already told us it's going to cost $100,000 for a parking study. Where is that money going to come from? He's going to ask to take it out of the stabilization fund. That is not an emergency. These two requests are not emergencies. The first one is asking for $25,000 going into the Inspectional Services Account in order to pay to demolish a building that was burnt out and is currently in litigation in court and can't be settled right away. So therefore, to give the neighbors some relief with the winter coming, and who knows, you know, what could, else could happen to that property to prevent a future fire or whatever, they want to rip it down. I agree with that. It should be. They should have already done it, in my opinion. I rode down my old street, John Street, the other night, and there's two or three buildings there that need to be looked at, too. But that money shouldn't be coming out of the stabilization fund. We just passed and gave the city manager almost $83 million starting July 1st. $83 million. In 60 days, 60 days after the start... I asked the chair to give me a little more time. This is kind of a lengthy thing.
I'm sorry, let's move.
After a, um, well, I'll cut it short then. I want to go to the $25,000 request from Inspectional Services. We put $25,000 in there. And in fiscal 18, we put $25,000 in there. There's $19,950 left from last year. Now, I know that can't be transferred into do, doing this, but why would you ask for a transfer when you didn't even use that money last year? And it's sitting there. Well, you've got the money to do this. Why come in and ask us for another 25 grand? I don't get that at all. The $50,000, as I said, is in the DPW Building Maintenance Expense Account. You know how much they had left from last year? $115,000 extra that wasn't spent in that account. Yet, as soon as some idea comes up, we come running to the stabilization fund to say, oh, let's spend that $50,000 there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, we get those questions answered.
I will be speaking again on this at the next meeting, and I...
Yes.
Can't waive your five minutes.
With the vote, do you have to vote?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. I'll give my five minutes to Counsel Bishop.
I don't want to, I know there's a lot of other business that I want to be going through.
This is going to go to the Committee on Finance.
Correct.
And I will be speaking on it at the next meeting. I don't think that we should be transferring this money. I think, I would be very happy to point out 15 or 20 places where you could get this money in the existing budget. Be happy to do it. Sit down with anyone who wants to listen to me and show you where the money is and how you can transfer. This, in my opinion, is a disgrace. And it makes me say, who's running the city here? I mean, why would you do this? I don't get it. If you, other than maybe you're setting us up because this is what you want to do, spend the stabilization fund every month. I'm very unhappy.
I know, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for yielding your town, Counsel. Counsel Robinson.
I just want to speak, actually, on the demolition of 80 Warren Avenue. I actually live across the street from this building. It's been a long process with the court battle going back and forth, and it's had a tremendous effect on the people in my neighborhood who have to walk out, as I walk out my house every day, have to look at this house. My neighbors have come up and showed their concerns in regards to the building. And it's very important to see that, that it is demolished. It took, it took a year with the courts going back and forth in regards to what was going to happen with this house. It's still in, it's still in litigation. And I think as a city, we owe it to the people of the neighborhood to take a look at demolishing this building.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Counselor, um, Counselor Tahada.
Yeah, I, I concur with Counsel Robinson's words about 80 Warren Ave. Our residents in that area have had to deal with a lot of wet smoke and stuff in the air and whatever. However, this gets resolved, this will get resolved, but that needs to be taken down, and the insurance company will reimburse the city once this case is settled, so that money can go back into whatever fund it is. But either way, it's getting done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on $25,000 for the demolition and the $50,000 for the air condition for the city council chamber? Okay, we'll see you at those meetings. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Communications and Petitions to the Council. We have a copy of a communication received with Parking Clerk Jeanette Centron White regarding the actions that were approved at the July 24, 2018 Traffic and Parking Meeting.
You know where he takes that?
No.
Okay. What's the word of the council? Parking? Counselor President Demali Dival.
Accepted filed communication under suspension, if there are no objections.
Accepted filed communication. Anyone like to speak on this? Thank you, next order. Next Communication.
Next Communication, Copy of a Communication Received from Co-Executive Directors of Habakkov, Karu Pitch and Lynn Peters Regarding Domestic Violence Training.
What's the word of the council on this matter? Counselor.
Followed communication under suspension, if there are no objections.
Madam President, accepted under suspension.
New business.
New business.
First order under business, new business. Order introduced by Counsel Vido, that the City Council of the City of Chelsea hereby approves a Conflict of Interest Exemption pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 286A, Section 20B, for the part-time position of Puppet, the Yet instructor in the Chelsea Community Schools Program to be held by Kelly Sawyer, effective July 9, 2018.
What's the word of the council?
Move to adopt unanimously under suspension?
Roll call, roll call.
Should I do a roll call? Okay, I'll do a roll call.
You're going to need a roll call on this one. Madam President, would you like to speak?
Um, no. So basically, this is an...
No or yes?
Yes, I'll speak on it. Sorry.
Okay. You got the floor.
Um, my apologies, I'm not feeling well. But, um, this is a person that is employed part-time, who will be seeking another part-time position within the city, and because there is a conflict of interest, um, some conflict of interest rules, this is providing the person an exemption so they will be able to take the part-time position. Very basic.
Anyone else like to speak? Ask for a roll call, Mr. Clark.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
Counsel Tahada.
Yes.
Counsel Abadana.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Pearl Latonda.
Yes.
Counsel Garcia.
Absent.
And Counsel, and Counsel Recupero. Ten in favor and underposed, one absent.
Order passes.
The next order introduced by Counsel Robinson, Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of $25,000 from the General Stabilization Fund 70/20 to supplement the fiscal year 2019 Inspection Service Department Building and...
The Committee on Finance.
You want to refer to this?
Yes, it is.
Counsel Robinson.
I did. I put it before, I...
All right. All right, so let's, let's start again. So what are we doing here?
If you recognize me first, going to move it to the Committee on Finance.
Are you objecting to the first reading?
We can have two readings, anyway. We'll, we'll let it go.
Okay.
And I move it to the Committee on Finance.
Counsel Robinson, what committee were you considering moving to?
Finance. I moved it to the Committee on Finance.
So we're all on the same page. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Order introduced by Counsel Recupero, Order that the City Manager Implement Commencing with Bills for July 1st, 2019, and thereafter a 10% Discount on Water and Sewer Bills for all units and any owner occupied single, two-family, or three-family homes, or any owner occupied condominium that has an individual water meter.
Chair recognizes Counselor Recupero.
I'd like to adopt under suspension if there's no objection.
We have an objection.
Now, we'll take it a roll call, though.
I know. I'm going to object it. He wants a subcommittee roll call.
If you go to what, first reading?
You objected to the first reading?
Who did?
So it's...
That's it.
It's it. It'll be before us again at the next meeting, Counselor.
Order introduced by Counsel Recupero, Counsel Lopez, Order that the City Manager instruct all companies who do repair work in the city to take their equipment back with them when they are not being used because they take up space for extended periods of time from residents to park.
Chair recognizes Counsel Lopez.
Adopted under suspension, is there no objection? We'd like to speak on it.
Are there any objections? No. You have the floor, Counselor.
Yes, I've been noticing that so many companies come to Chelsea and do construction. And the reason that Counsel Recupero and I put this is because they take so many parking spaces from our community. And I actually emailed Mr. Ambrosino and some members of DPW, and I request that the company who comes and do all this construction, if they can move or at least have some consideration for our people who need parking spaces at night. That's, that was the reason why we put this in.
I, I think I may have spoken too soon. Counsel Abadana, did you?
I don't want to object to it being under suspension, but I just ask this to be sent to Public Works in light of the comments made by DPW that we are maybe, this order may harm operations on construction projects. So I'd rather have a discussion on it before it just gets passed.
So is your motion to move it to a subcommittee on Public Works?
On Public Works.
It was amended, it was amended.
I'm sorry?
Is that an amendment draft?
Amendment.
Amendment.
Boy, amendment.
So it will be sent to a subcommittee on Public Works? We, we good?
On Public Works.
Did you have some, did you have, okay. I'm sorry, I'm like...
Okay.
So what's amended on this?
He amended it to refer it to the Subcommittee on Public Works under suspension.
Okay. Next order of business. Oh, Counsel Bishop.
On the amendment.
I understand what the assistant from the Department of Public Works had to say tonight, that removing every piece of equipment every night would hurt the jobs, I understand that. But this very clearly says, when not being used. So I guess the problem is, from what I understand, that they're leaving a piece of equipment at that location and not using it for a week or more, and it's just taking up a parking spot. If they're going to use it the next day or the day after, then that's a different story. But if you're not, get it out of there. Why, you know, parking is, as you all know, is a problem everywhere in the city, not just in this area. But I agree with the two district councils, and I support them. And they're not being unreasonable by saying, when not being used. It says right here in this order, when not being used. It's another reason, if you're going to use it the next day, you know, they can leave it there. But they shouldn't be leaving equipment for a week or more and not using it and taking up people's parking spots.
Go ahead.
Counselor Brown?
So I support my counsel here for the amendment. I think one of the reasons that we had this amendment, and we spoke about this amendment, is to find out exactly is this equipment being used, if it's just been leaving, left alone for five or six days. And again, a conference would not only give us a procedure, but we would also have something in writing that we can give to the construction workers and those that's actually doing, supervising the jobs, saying, it's now the city's procedure, or our opinion, that if you're not going to use this here equipment, you can't leave this over on our streets for two, two or three days. Just, it's almost like parking your car on Arlington Street. You shouldn't be leaving it there for five or six days while you catch a plane to go to New York. It takes up parking spots. And I agree with the makers of the motion, but I believe that we have to have some clarity in exactly what we're doing. Thank you.
Counsel Abadana.
Again, my motion was not to object to the idea behind it, but again, in light of the concern brought by the Assistant Deputy Director of Public Works, the devil's in the details. It was just brought out, and so why don't we go into count, into committee, talk about the objections or the concerns that these two councils have brought for us, and figure out a policy in place? That's all. I think this can all be worked out. But to issue this blankly without any instruction whatsoever to DPW or the contractors may, may lead us to some problems down the road. That's all I'm, I'm looking to avoid.
Thank you, Counselor Recupero. And then Robinson.
Fellow counselors say, when they are not being used, so what is the point of having a conference when you're saying, if they're not being used, take them away? If they're being used, leave them alone. That's what we're telling them. So what do we have in a conference to say? Well, when you decide you're not being used, what do we, you know, you want it or you don't want it? The, the whole, the whole thing, it says it clear as anything, when they are not being used. So if they're not being used, what do you need a conference? You need a writing? This is in writing. Once we do something like this and we approve it, that's writing. That's we doing it. We're telling them, this is what you want to do. All the body here, we're saying, this is what you have to do. So I'm much more clear and clear than you, than clear than you have to say that. What do you got to put it in? Big words with a flashing board? Hey, this is what we want.
We get the point, Counselor Recupero. Counsel Robinson, and then hopefully we can move on.
Yeah, I, I agree with my colleague about going to conference. One of my concerns is the increase in cost of being able to move equipment back and forth to the city, what it's going to add to our bottom line on all these projects. So I think it's, gives us a great opportunity to sit down and talk about it and come to a nice conclusion.
Thank you, counselors. Uh, next order of business.
Next order on business, Order Introduced by Counsel Vido, Order that a Subcommittee on Conference be held with Habakkov to participate in domestic violence training.
Thank you. Would you like to speak on it, or?
Uh, no.
If you, I mean, you don't have to.
No.
No? Okay, moving on.
Next order introduced by Counsel Robinson, Order the Subcommittee on Conference be held with the Independent Auditor Clifton Larson Allen, L.L.P., to discuss the Comprehensive L.L.P., to discuss the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty-seventeenth, the GAO and OMB reports, the report on Chelsea Retirement System and the Management Letter.
Adopt unanimously under suspension, there are no objections.
Next order introduced by Counsel Robinson. Order that a subcommittee conference be held with the City Manager planning and development housing in Chelsea Restoration to talk about first-time home buyers and what assistance we may explore.
Counsel Robinson.
Hi, adopt this unanimously under suspension. I'll just be brief, actually. Presently, there are thirty-five first-time home buyers taking the first-time home buyers class. There are seventeen Chelsea residents who are firemen, policemen, teachers, and DPW workers. And the goal is to take a look at, is there any way that we might be able to help them by the Not Sure Consortium, either ponying up some money, or Chelsea Restoration is willing to help on, and there are others. So I think that we deserve to have a conversation about it. Thank you.
Counselor, as another.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson, for bringing this up. You know, as someone who had taken the first-time home buyers course from Chelsea Restoration, I know how, what a great asset it is, and they've been there many, many years. Helen Zuko and Marilyn Garcia have been stewards here, helping so many first-time home buyers, you know, being able to get assistance with down payment assistance through the collaboration of the local banks here in Chelsea and in the area. It's a particular important time, I think, to have this discussion because we are now in the middle of creating the policy for what the CPA will be used for. And I don't know if some of you have been asked to comment on it, or as we create this policy, but I was part of one of the focus groups, and in my discussion, really talked about saying that CPA money, in my opinion, should be used for down payment assistance. I'm a big fan of homeownership versus rental. The biggest reason for that is, if you have an affordable rental unit, you have to stay poor. What I mean by that is, you have income guidelines, and if you're renting an affordable unit, and you get a bonus, or a raise, or anything, all of a sudden, you're forced to move out. And it really is the incentive to stay poor. Whereas, if you are buying an affordable home, if five years from now, you're making more money, you still own the home, it doesn't matter. And at some point, you sell it, you're gonna sell it at an affordable rate. So that's why I think that we need to have these conversations, so that, to make sure that the CPA policy and the plan incorporates entities or partners such as Chelsea Restoration, so that, you know, we can help keep our Chelsea residents stay in Chelsea. And again, that's why I hope that the CPA, you know, the policy leads to that goal of the people that this organization is helping. Thank you.
Next order of business.
The next order of business is the introduction of the prohibition on plastic bags, introduced by Counsel Vido and Counselor Lopez.
Counselor Lopez.
I would like to move to a subcommittee conference, so we can have the opportunity to talk to our community members.
Thank you. Let's move to a subcommittee conference.
Subcommittee Conference.
Thank you.
The next order is introduced by Counselor Garcia. However, she didn't sign it, so Counsel Brown co-signed it. Request that the Traffic and Parking Commission have a discussion on possible parking meter solutions for hair salons with patrons that are there for more than two hours.
Counselor Brown.
Would you like to make a motion, adopt this order under suspension, please?
Under suspension.
The next order introduced by Counsel Pearl Latonda. Order that the City Manager look into painting parking lines on residential streets to ensure enough parking for the residents.
Counselor Pelletanda.
I would like to have a suspension speaker on it, please.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
With the parking as a premium in our city, it seems like a lot of people want to come home at night. People don't seem to be parking close enough or too far away from each other. Seems to be a space in between vehicles parked on the residential streets. I propose it may not be a good idea, may be a good idea, but I'd like to have, you know, the parking, look into it, along with the City Manager, to see if it's feasible to paint lines on the streets in the residential area to maybe alleviate some of the parking spaces, we can get more cars on the street.
Counselor, can you, I'm sorry, but when, when, I got a request from the back that when we speak, we speak into the microphones, because they're having a hard time hearing us. And then the public can't hear us.
Okay.
Yeah, what I was saying is that it doesn't seem like there's enough space for the cars parking on the streets in Chelsea. There seems to be spaces in between, people may be, you know, two feet, four feet, six feet away, and there's a big space in between two cars, cars parked closer together, there may be more space to get more cars on the street. I propose that maybe if we painted some lines on the street, people would know exactly where to park, and that would alleviate some of the spaces in between the cars. It may be a good idea, may not be a good idea, but I'd like to have the City Manager look into it with the parking as well. Thank you.
Counselor Lopez.
Counselor Pelletanda, about the lines on parking, I actually put an order a while ago on Library and Marlborough Street, and they said it wasn't feasible to do it because that not all cars are the same size.
Okay.
Next order.
Next order.
Order introduced by Counsel Pelletanda. Order that the City Manager have DPW raise the lights to a higher setting on Central Avenue, Eastern Ave, opposite the parking garage for safety reasons.
Counsel Pelletanda. Adopt under suspension. You have the floor.
Yeah, I seem to be taking the silver line a lot lately, and it seems, when you get off the silver line bus there, across the street from the parking garage on Central Avenue, it seems to be very dark there. I find it to be a safety issue with people walking on the opposite side of the street, walking up the street with the trees there, and not enough lighting. I figured if the settings may be raised on the LED lights that we have opposite, it may attract a little bit more lighting, so I'd like to have the DPW look into that.
Thank you. Counselor Lopez.
In Central Avenue, I talked to a DPW Director and an Assistant Director about two poles that need a light there, and they put the lights there, it's just national green, no.
National green.
And it's that, and it's that who hasn't connected. That's according to Assistant Director, so it's coming up. The, actually, the lights, how do you call the, they connect, they connect the, but they haven't turned it on, but they're on. It's coming up soon with the help of a certification committee.
Thank you, Counsel Lopez. Next order of business.
Final order introduced by Counsel Pelletanda. Order that the City Manager give the City Council an update on the traffic light situation on Broadway, Clinton, and Eastern Ave.
Counsel Pelletanda.
You have the floor.
As you all know, across from the Holiday Inn there, on Broadway, Eastern Avenue, and Clinton Street, there seems to be a lot of bottleneck traffic there, coming out of Clinton Street. We try to get out of Clinton Street, people coming from Eastern Ave, run the stop sign, people coming in from Revere up the other end, won't let you cut through. So I know the City Manager, they were looking on to something about, you know, changing the light situation there with the new construction that may be going on in the future, to give us an update of what's gonna be happening with that situation. Thank you.
Okay. That's it? Public announcements. Counselor, as another.
September seventeenth is the Taste of Chelsea on Habakkov, and that'll be held at six P.M.
Counsel Robinson.
The Chelsea Reach Program's annual fund, ninth annual fundraiser, Ride, Run, Stroll for Reach, which is September sixteenth, registration is at nine A.M. The event's at ten, it's on at Port Park. The other announcement for Chelsea residents who might be interested in seeing Chick Carrera on September twenty-ninth, nine P.M., he will be at Scholars Jazz Club, and Chelsea residents will get a fifteen percent discount if you do attend.
Counselor Brown.
The Committee of Honduras United for Massachusetts is inviting us to a multicultural festival celebrating the independence of Central American countries. That festival will take place this Saturday, September fifteenth, from ten A.M. to five P.M. The parade will start at City Hall and end up on Highland Park and Willow Street. There'll be cultural activities, festivals for dancing, folk dancing, some groups, some local entertainment. One of our residents is the president here, Ms. Frank Margarita Franco. So if you're not doing anything on Saturday, it's a good chance to go out and celebrate some of the different cultures. Thank you.
Counsel Bishop.
President, our Jewish citizens in Chelsea observed Rosh Hashanah yesterday and today, and I just want to make note of that. And also, I would ask for a moment of silence, tomorrow being nine eleven, in the anniversary of that terrorist attack on the United States. And I would ask that we have a moment of silence for all those that lost their lives.
Before we have the moment of silence, are there any other announcements?
Counselor, they have. Sorry. The, September fourteenth, the Welcome to Chelsea Photo Contest. They are having the gallery opening, and that is this Friday at the four-fifty-sixth Broadway, which is the old Salvation Army. So they had a contest of best pictures here, and the best photos by Chelsea residents, and that'll be on display starting six P.M. to, six P.M. to eight P.M. this Friday.
Here?
At the Salvation Army. There's a reception that day. And then the residents and those who walk down Broadway can see it along the windows.
Okay. Any other announcements before we move on to the moment of silence?
So came out last week for the election, and we had a very good turnout here in Chelsea despite what initially was forecast. It was great turnout, so I want to thank everyone for going out and doing their civic engagement by participating in voting and also engaging in the direction of their community. Want to thank all the winners and all those that had served us in the past, and those that will continue to serve us. But again, I just want to thank everyone for going out next, last Tuesday. Thank you.
I just want to specifically congratulate our new Congresswoman, Ayanna Presley, and give farewell to Congressman Capuano, who has served us for twenty years. He has been a bulldog and has really paved the way for, for, for new leadership, and it's, just wanted to say congratulations to him for his service.
I just want to congratulate the senior citizens, Bachi team, that had a tournament this past Saturday against Revere, and they won for the second year in a row. And I want to congratulate them. There were some folks that were up there in years, and they stayed there for seven hours playing Bachi and beat that great Italian community of Revere.
That's awesome. Are we done with announcements? All right, moment of silence. Oh, I'm sorry, before we do the moment of silence, I just want to acknowledge that School Committee Woman, Rosemary Carlisle, is here. And Julio Hernandez was here as well, but he's gone now.
Moment of silence for Joan Els, her son Eddie, serves on as Honorable Board, and also a school committee member. Also Eddie Holden, who was a great Chelsea athlete, who is in the Hall of Fame. Now, moment of silence, yeah.
And Catherine Korea, who also passed away in the last few, two weeks.
I'm proud of her.